All right, we would ask everybody to stand.
May we pray. Eternal God, Father of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, and the Creator of all mankind, again we come before Thou'Throne. Thank you for the invite. Thank you that your heart is at us, your thoughts are for us, and you said in your word that you know what thoughts you have toward us, thoughts to bless us and prosper us. Now, Father, we take in consideration that the responsibility of doing right, so we ask that you would bless this council with a heart of compassion that we might consider as you consider the widows, the fatherless, the orphans, and those who are less fortunate. God, we pray that you would bless this city. We ask your blessings again upon each citizen. And then, Father, we pray for the religious establishment churches set up, houses of worship, that you might bless your people and be close to them. Now, Father, we ask that you would guide the rest of this meeting and that the dictation of our hearts would be acceptable in thy sight. We ask you again, bless this place, the people, we pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please tell us to put your right hand on your heart and say the pledge of allegiance with me and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
We have four proclamations tonight. World Teachers Day, Fire Prevention Week, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I will read them all, and then we will have whoever's going to receive them to come down. World Teachers Day. Whereas Lancaster's future strength depends on providing a high-quality education to all students, whereas teachers' quality matters more to students' achievement than any other school-related factor. And whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lesson plans and supporting students, and whereas we proudly lead in demonstrating to our community to recognize and support our teachers in educating the children of this community. And whereas hashtag Teachers Can is a statewide movement supported by more than 150 partnering businesses and organizations committed to elevating the teachers' profession and honoring the critical role teachers play in the success of Texas. And now therefore I, Clyde C. Hairston, Mayor of the City of Lancaster, and on behalf of the City Council of the City of Lancaster, Texas, do hereby proclaim October the 5th, 2025, as World Teachers Day, and encourage members of our community to personally express appreciation to our teachers and display a little blue ribbon outside your home or businesses the week of October the 5th as a symbol of support for our educators. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and have caused the seal of the City of Lancaster, Texas, to be affixed this 22nd day of September, 2025, Clyde C. Hairston, Mayor of the City of Lancaster. Okay, we'll put it in order. All right, the next one is Fire Prevention Week. Whereas October raises awareness about fire safety and home safety to help ensure your home and families are prepared in case of an emergency, and whereas we also honor our brave firefighters who continue to put their lives in harm's way, as well as those that have lost their lives in the line of duty. And whereas each year, an average of 1.4 million fires burn in the United States, resulting in thousands of deaths and injuries, along with billions of dollars in property damage. And whereas Lancaster Fire Marshal Office and firefighters are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through the prevention and protection education. And whereas we urge all citizens to visit ready.gov to learn safety tips to identify potential fire hazard, preventing devastating fires, and know what to do in case of a fire emergency. Now therefore, I, Clyde C. Hairston, Mayor of the City of Lancaster, and on behalf of the City Council of the City of Lancaster, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of October the 5th through the 11th as Fire Prevention Week in the City of Lancaster, and urge all citizens to observe this day and renew their commitment to fire safety. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and have caused the seal of the City of Lancaster, Texas, to be affixed this 22nd day of September, 2025, Clyde C. Hairston, Mayor of the City of Lancaster. The next one is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence impacts women, men, and children of every age, background in belief. And whereas while physical marks may often be most obvious signs of harm caused by domestic violence, it is also represented in patterns of physical, emotional, sexual, and psychologically and/or economic pressure. And whereas, according to the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence, one in four women and one in nine men experience physical violence, sexual violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner. And whereas research shows that a protective factor against preventing domestic violence is creating a community where people are connected, supportive, and care for each other. And whereas we urge all citizens to play a part in preventing and ending domestic violence by reporting it to 911 or seeking help via the National Domestic Violence Hotline at Again, that number is 1-800-799-7233. Now therefore, I, Clyde C. Hairston, Mayor of the City of Lancaster, and on behalf of the City Council of the City of Lancaster, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And the City of Lancaster and urge all citizens to observe this month by speaking out against domestic violence and supporting local efforts to assist victims to find the help in healing. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and have caused the seal of the City of Lancaster, Texas, to be affixed this 22nd day of September, 2025, Clyde C. Hairston, Mayor of the City of Lancaster. Last but not least, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas breast cancer is the second most commonly diagnosed form of cancer for women in the United States and remain the second-leading cause of cancer death among the American women. And whereas an X-ray of the breast is recognized as the single most effective method of detecting breast changes long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt. Early detection and improved treatment is believed to have significantly reduced the number of death caused by breast cancer. And whereas we recognize the commitment of researchers, scientists, nonprofit organizations that are dedicated to discovering the cure for breast cancer, and whereas we recognize that over two and a half million Americans are breast cancer survivors that give us hope of a better future. And whereas we urge all citizens, especially those who have a family history or may be an increased risk, to consult with their health provider about the likelihood of developing breast cancer. Schedule regular screening and timely treatment if diagnosed. Now therefore, I, Clyde C. Hairston, Mayor of the City of Lancaster, and on behalf of the City Council of Lancaster, Texas, extend our deepest respect for survivors and those who are advocating for prevention and a cure. In so doing, hereby proclaim October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Lancaster, and urge all citizens to stand in solidarity with breast cancer survivors and reaffirm our commitment to raising awareness and advancing research efforts. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and have caused the seal of the City of Lancaster, Texas, to be affixed this 22nd day of September, 2025, Clyde C. Hairston, Mayor of the City of Lancaster. All right, we're gonna have, Council, y'all can come with me. We're gonna have the World Teachers Day, the representatives to come and receive the proclamation. Y'all can join me.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna allow them to tell you who they are. Who gonna be first?
I'll go first.
Come on in. Tell us who you are and, you know, and all of that.
I am Shalondria Bell. I was the District Teacher of the Year and District Elementary Teacher of the Year, and now I'm the Assistant Principal of Pleasant Run Elementary.
All right. And who are you, young man?
Joseph Thomas Secondary Teacher of the Year, teacher at the high school.
All right. All right. All right, thank you.
And it was Jersey Day today.
It was Jersey Day today.
Oh, Jersey, that's all right. All right, thank you, and congratulations. All right, Fire Prevention Week, is that you, Chief?
Yeah, Fire Marshal, there's a fire, so he sent me to represent.
Oh, that's all right. All right, you wanna say anything?
Just to say that y'all may have met the Fire Marshal, Sean Garrett. He's actually wanted to be here. This is a proud moment for him, but he's actually had a structural fire right now, so he's actually earning his keep.
But thank y'all, I appreciate it. Come on in.
Yes, sir.
Count it three, three times. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
All right. Anybody receiving the Domestic Violence Awareness Month?
Police chief, sir.
The police chief?
Yes, sir.
Did you wanna say anything, Chief?
No, sir.
All right.
It's important to keep addressing it, that's it.
Keep the what?
Keep addressing it.
Keep addressing it. That was very important.
That's right.
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna count it three, three times. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Send that to CNN.
I will.
All right, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. That'd be me. All right, did you wanna say anything?
Just glad to be 11 years cancer-free.
Okay, I'm gonna count it three, three times. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Captain. All right, that leads us up to the public citizens' comments. At this time, citizens who have pre-registered before the call to order will be allowed to speak on any matter for a length of time not to exceed three minutes. No council action or discussion may take place on a matter until such matter has been placed on the agenda and posted in accordance with the law. Anyone designed to speak on an item scheduled for a public hearing is requested hold their comments until the public hearing on that item. All right, City Secretary?
We have Rashawn Ford, 211 North Hendry Street, Lancaster, Texas.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Just a few events, quite a few, to bring to your attention this evening for you. So the Friends of the Library is hosting their annual Friends of the Library Book Sale. This is going to be held on a members-only event for Thursday, September 25th, from 12 until 6:00. And then the public book sale begins on Friday the 26th and Friday and Saturday, the 27th. That is going to be the Friday from 10:00 to 6:00, and then Saturday from 10:00 until 4:00, right at the Veterans Memorial Library. That is 1600 Veterans Memorial Parkway. Our Parks and Rec Department has, is beginning a new event that is, and I will try to get this right to me, it is the Parks for Pollinators Bio Blitz. And this is a very short event that allows people to find and record as many different plants and animals as they can. And what happens is there's an app that you can download, and then there's a whole network behind it, and people share different comments and notes and different activities and let you know what the scientific name of that plant is. And so it's really an opportunity for the community to get out in nature and have a great time doing it. That is going to be at the Bear Creek Nature Park from 2:00 until 4:00. Again, that is Sunday, September 28th, and that is free. For more information, you can call the Recreation Department. That is 972-218-3700. On Saturday, September 27th, the Lancaster High School Marching Band is hosting the Battle of the Bands. That is going to be held beginning at 8:00 a.m. at the Beverly Humphrey Stadium located at 200 East Wintergreen Road. The tickets are $12.50. The tickets are required for purchase for admission to the event, and the tickets are being sold via Eventbrite, and we will provide that link for you. The Lancaster Recreation Department is holding their second monthly gardening class. That will be Saturday, October 4th. That is going to be from 11:00 to 2:00. The prices are $10 per person. Spaces are limited. And again, that is October 4th from 11:00 until noon at the Lancaster Recreation Center. The Lancaster ISD is hosting their Homecoming Parade. That is going to be Monday, October 6th, from 5:30 until completion. Typically, that is around 7:30, 8:00 p.m., and that will begin in the town square and go to the high school, where they will have a prep rally at the end of that one. And then to wrap it up, the city will be hosting the Citywide National Night Out with our Lancaster Police Department. That is going to be Tuesday, October 7th, at the Public Safety Building located at 650 North Dallas Avenue, from 6:00 until 8:00, and that is free for the entire community. Please come on out. We'll have a lot of different vendors. We're trying to convince the chief to get back in the dunk tank, and so it should be a really great opportunity. Thank you so much.
Well, if you can convince him to get back in that cage, I think it'd draw about 100,000 people.
That's what I'm hoping.
All right, is that it?
Yes, sir.
All right, that leads us up to our consent agenda. Items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and are generally enacted in one motion. The exception to this rule is that a council member may request one or more items to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion, and I would ask the City Secretary to read those items into the record.
C1, Consider a Resolution Authorizing Participation in the Purpose of Opioid Settlement Brought by the State of Texas and Other Jurisdictions Against Purdue. C2, Consider a Resolution Authorizing An Agreement with Freeza Nichols Inc. in Amount Not to Exceed $185,700 and Zero Cent to Renew the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. MS4, Stormwater Program and Fee Structure. C3, Consider a Resolution Awarding Reconstruction of Gary Way from Wintergreen to Balkan Drive. 2, CCGMC LLC Series B in Amount Not to Exceed $261,800. C4, Consider a Resolution Ratifying An Agreement Authorizing Payment Marketing Improvements at Multiple City of Lancaster Locations Through a Cooperative Agreement with Strepan Zone in Amount Not to Exceed $64,383.78. C5, M25-21, Consider a Resolution Approving an Amendment to an Agreement with Gap Strategies Increasing the Scope to Add Services Related to the Comprehensive Plan. Update and Increase the Amount by $34,494.
Okay, Council, you heard the consent agenda. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to approve Consent Attend items 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion in the second to approve the consented items 1 through 5. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say no. Those who abstain, say abstain. It carries. All right, that moves us to our action item. City Secretary, action item number 6.
Discuss and consider a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an official ballot casting the City of Lancaster's vote for the election of the Texas Municipal League, TML Region 13 Directors, on the TML Board of Directors.
All right, is there any staff comments?
Mayor, members of council, this is the City Secretary's item.
Okay, is there any comments?
Mayor and council, this item is authorizing the mayor to sign an official ballot for casting the Lancaster's vote for the election of the TML Region 13 Director. We have attached the official ballot, and so council will decide on the three members, and they will authorize you to sign the resolution.
Okay. All right, Council, what's your pleasure? Council, what's your pleasure?
Mayor, I make a motion to nominate Stanley J. Houshy.
Second.
The incumbent.
All right, is there any other nominations? All right, will you have one nomination? Strangberg?
She's second.
Oh, you seconded? Okay.
Yes, sir.
So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say no. All right, it carries. All right, that moves us to action item number 7. City Secretary?
M25-37, Discuss and consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a development agreement with RSP Holdings LLC relating to building materials and landscaping for the development of property being a 1.069-acre tract of land out of the MM Miller Survey Abstract Number 874, Page 236, addressed as 631 West Pleasant Run Road, City of Lancaster, Dallas County, Texas.
All right, is there any staff comments?
Mayor, members of council, the item before you this evening is to consider a development agreement. This is a companion item to a future zoning case, which is Z25-22, for a development of the property located at 631 West Pleasant Run Road. The property is about 1.069 acres in size, and the subject property is currently zoned retail, and it is compatible with the future land use plan. The request is for a retail store with four pumps to serve eight vehicles for fueling. The development agreement is in place because in September of 2019, the Texas Legislature passed House Bill 2439 prohibiting local governments from enforcing codes regarding building materials and commercial standards for commercial and residential properties. To enforce these standards, the city and the developer must enter into an agreement agreeing to develop with certain standards. The developer in this case is proposing to comply with the city's requirement for masonry material, as well as meeting the landscape standards for the development of this site. The property will be utilized with stucco and wood-like architectural panels for the development and in compliance with our landscape standards, and those landscape standards must be maintained throughout the life of the development, and if anything should change, they are required to return them to the point at which they are approved. Staff is recommending council approve this development agreement as it has been presented, and if approved, it will run with the land and be required to be maintained throughout the existence. And we'd be happy to answer any questions if you have those at this time.
All right, Council, do you have any questions?
Is the applicant in the audience tonight?
Yes, he's right here.
So I do, I do have a question, sir, please. Thank you.
Please state your name and your address, please, for the record.
I'm Mr. Hu Shang, Japanese, Japanese consulting engineers. Address is 2121 North Joseph Lane, Suite 200, Carlton, 75006.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks for your interest in Lancaster. I have one question for the development. Is there gonna be a canopy over the service pumps?
Yes.
Okay. And the supports, is that gonna be bricked in? Would that be bricked in, or is that gonna be metal, metal poles?
Whatever the city requires, we will provide it when we submit the building plans.
Materials, so she's stating that the materials are within the development agreement, which are the stucco, masonry materials, and the wood-like architectural panels on the facility itself.
On the facility?
Mm-hmm.
Right. So, any objection on having the poles bricked in?
He's talking about your columns supporting your, the category.
We have no problem with that. As the city requires, we comply with it, yes.
I just think that gives such a fresher and more presentable approach instead of the standard column, so I appreciate that, sir.
That'll be fine.
That means a lot, because that, that property's been there for a long time.
For a long time, yes.
Thank you once again for your interest and your cooperation.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for?
No.
All right, seeing none, what's your pleasure?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve item M, item 7, M25-37, with the added request of the brick on the metal columns. I second it.
All right, Council, you heard the motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say no. Those who abstain, say abstain. All right, it carries. Council, we will be moving the executive session before the public hearing. City Attorney, did you add any additional information?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In addition to the stated executive session agenda, it's my recommendation that council also discusses item 11 under exception 551012, consultation with legal counsel.
All right, City Secretary, you wanna read the executive session items?
Yes, sir. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the City Council will convene an executive session to consider the following matters. 1, Section 551.071, pending, trend, no contemplate or potential related litigations in regards to a, real property located at 1508 Duberry Boulevard, Bel Air Place Apartments, fee sales tax audit.
All right, Council, it is 7:31. Meet me in the boardroom. We are convening back into open session at 7:56. And we will go to public hearing, item number 8. At this... Okay, at this time, citizens who have pre-registered before the call to order, who wish... Okay, at this time, citizens who have been registered before the call to order, who wish to speak with, uh, when the mayor opens the public, the, the open, uh, open hearing, uh, will be allowed to address that matter. Each speaker is allowed a maximum of three minutes to address the matter. Comments should be limited to the items under discussion. Again, item number eight, city secretary.
Z two-five dash two-two, conduct a public hearing and consider an ordinance granting a specific use permit, S U P, to allow a retail store with four fuel dispensers for eight vehicles on a property being a one point zero-six-nine acre tract of land out of the M M Miller survey, abstract number eight-seven-four, page two-hundred-and-thirty-six, addressed as six-three-one West Pleasant Run Road, City of Lancaster, Dallas County, Texas.
Uh, city manager.
Mayor, members of council, the item before you is the companion item to the previous item, which was your development agreement. This is the zoning request to grant a specific use permit to allow for the retail store with four fuel dispensers that will fuel eight vehicles, uh, on a property addressed to six-thirty-one West Pleasant Run Road. The property is zoned retail, the future land use plan designates this as a commercial note, and this request for the four pumps and the retail store is, uh, compatible with the comprehensive land use plan. The land development code requires specific use permits when it relates and requires a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission to allow for the regulations regarding the electrical code, the building code, the fire code, and the plumbing code. This property is to allow for four fuel pumps to serve eight vehicles at this facility. This item was considered at a regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, on, and it was noticed in the newspaper record on August tenth for Rambler Newspaper, and notices were mailed to property owners within two-hundred feet of the subject site. There was one letter received in opposition to the request, and there were no letters in support. At their September second, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the zoning case, and staff does concur. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Counsel, do you have any questions for city manager or staff? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing portion on this item. Do we have any?
No, sir.
Do anyone care to speak on this item in the audience? Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I make a motion.
I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve, uh, item eight.
I second.
All right, there's been a motion in the second to approve public hearing item number eight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say no. Those who abstain, say abstain. All right, that moves us to public hearing, item number nine, city secretary.
E two-five dash one-eight, conduct a public hearing and consider an ordinance granting a specific use permit, S U P, to allow for a drone delivery service operation on a shipping container on property, on the property known as Lot one R one, Block one, out of the Beltline Edition, addressed as one-five-zero-North Interstate thirty-five East, City of Lancaster, Dallas County, Texas.
All right, city manager.
Mayor, members of council, this is a request to grant a specific use permit for drone service at one-fifty-North Interstate thirty-five E, which is, uh, a Walmart located at that intersection, and it's for drone delivery by wing. Uh, this item is coming forward, the, uh, S U P was granted for a one-year period of time, and it was set to come back before you for consideration, uh, to continue. The, uh, drone delivery is an accessory service to the retail store. The item was considered at our Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on September second of twenty-twenty-five, and they did recommend approval with several conditions noting that the staging area not encroach upon the fire lane, that the, um, areas surrounding the fence be maintained free and clear of any, uh, debris or trash, uh, and that the areas around the mesh screening also be properly maintained, remain in good condition, and that the shipping container be stored within the staging area, and that container should not be larger than a hundred and fifty-nine square feet, and the shipping container after one year must be replaced by a garden-style shed. Um, and the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended this, uh, item, and staff concurs with that recommendation for approval. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Counsel, do you have any questions for the city manager or staff? Seeing none, I will open up the public hearing portion on this item. Do we have any?
Yes, sir, we have Ryan Tremble, eight-nine-one-two, Lockhaven Drive, Dallas, Texas.
Hey, come on down.
Thank you, mayor. Good to see you this evening. Thank you, counsel, for having us. Ryan Tremble, eight-nine-one-two, Lockhaven Drive, uh, thank you. Uh, again, it's a pleasure to be here with you in your esteemed city. Um, you know, we're thrilled to continue this service, this exclusive service, uh, for your residents here in Lancaster, um, and grateful for the partnership with your city, you know. Uh, I've had the chance to represent Walmart for, uh, eight, nine years now, and, um, hard pressed to think of another city between, you know, your Parishville Distribution Center, the, the regular distribution center, our drone delivery service. We, we've got a lot of our techno, our cutting-edge technology here in your city, and so, um, appreciate your partnership. Uh, it, our, the store we're discussing tonight, you know, store manager Ivan Gutierrez and his store team are really leaning in, supporting, uh, my friend Joseph Thomas, who was here earlier from Lancaster I S D, and the students there, uh, they're raising money for Children's Miracle Network, they're doing, uh, food bank work, so they're doing a lot of work. Um, you know, regarding drone delivery, mayor, uh, believe you were at our, our delivery here at, uh, the golf course not too long ago with a lot of our elected officials from the region. Uh, it was an exciting day, and, uh, really glad to be in your city to, to show that. Um, I, I'll just note, you know, what of our, our customers are saying is that they're really enjoying this service, especially, um, we've heard from a lot of seniors who are saying, you know, we don't have to get out of our house to get, you know, an item we need, whether it's, you know, uh, juice, Advil, over-the-counter, you know, uh, medications. So, uh, it's really a cool service, and we're really, really grateful, uh, to, to continue it here. I'll pause, introduce the great Bernice Espinoza from our partners Kim Lee Horn, and Josh Buchi from our drone partner Wing, who is doing his best not to twist the knife over TCU beating my S M U Mustangs over the weekend. Thank you for your graciousness, uh, Josh. Um, but I will, uh, pause there. Like city manager said, we are going to be replacing the, uh, storage container in the next year. Um, we heard that loud and clear, and we'll be getting the kiosk shed up, uh, in the not-too-distant future. So I'll pause there, answer any questions.
I thought you was going to come and demonstrate, bring up the drone witch and.
I should have flown in on it.
How fast, how fast it comes. All right, counsel, you have any questions?
I guess my only question, if I may, is, there was some talk about the storage container and then a garden-style container. Um, I guess maybe I'm naive, but I really don't understand the differences. I thought that, that container sits in behind the fence, so it's not even seen.
Uh, that, that is correct. Um, it was, you know, we like the storage, uh, we like the storage container. I know our, our vendor partner likes that because it, ease of getting the, the aircraft in and out and moving the charging pads and doing all the things they need to do, but, um, you know, a lot of your P and Z commissioners felt it was important to have the, kind of the nicer-looking, um, storage unit, and we were, you know, we're fine to provide that.
But it's not even seen, no.
It's visible, sir.
Oh, is it?
It's, it's visible. It's a railcar sto, um, storage-like container, and it is visible from behind the fence.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for being agreed to do that.
Yes.
Aesthetically.
Size, size-wise, is that going to affect, stifle, or hinder, hinder the performance?
Uh, not to my knowledge.
No.
Josh is nodding no. There you go.
It's what they use in neighboring communities where they have this thing.
Yes. We've used this in other.
Fair enough, then. I'm ready.
All right.
That was there yesterday.
We, we appreciate you, your willingness to, to beautify.
Absolutely.
Right.
Absolutely.
Any, anyone else? All right, well, listen, we appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Anyone in the audience care to speak on this item? Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your favor?
Mayor, if I may.
I mean, pleasure.
Uh, to approve item number nine with the stipulations that were brought forward by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I second.
All right, you heard the motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say no. Those who abstain, say abstain. It carries. All right, that moves us to public hearing item number ten, city secretary.
Z two-five dash one-nine, conduct a public hearing and consider an ordinance granting a zoning change from agriculture open, A O, to single-family estates, S F E, on property being five point two-six acres out of the Charles H Menard survey, abstract number one-two-eight, page twenty, dressed as two-six-two-one Bear Creek Road, City of Lancaster, Dallas County, Texas.
City manager.
Mayor, members of council, this is a request to approve an ordinance rezoning property addressed as twenty-six-twenty-one Bear Creek Road to single-family estate from agricultural open. The property is approximately five point two-six acres in size. The applicant is desiring to, uh, build homes on the property, and the S F E zoning district allows for one to two units per the acre, and staff is recommending approval of the item as it has been presented. This item was considered at our Planning and Zoning Commission on September second, twenty-twenty-five, and they did recommend approval. Staff is concurring with that request, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
All right, counsel, do you have any questions for the city manager or staff?
So I did ask the question about, uh, how carved out one of the houses that sat there, uh, that's not part of the site.
Right.
But there are two houses that were sitting there.
And you did ask me about the address, which is twenty-six-seventeen, uh, which is one of the homes that you were referring to. It's not in this actual plat and tract.
Oh.
So that's the second home that you're referencing.
Right.
Twenty-six-twenty-one is a separate tract, and they are proposing to make that single-family estate.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions or comments? All right, uh, we will open up the public hearing portion of this item. Do we have anyone?
No, sir.
Hi.
Okay.
I'm Joan Adams, and I'm the owner of this tract.
Okay.
I've been there for twenty-five years, and I want my daughter, who is.
Right here.
Oh, right here. Uh, to put a home on there so we can be together. It would be an advantage to both of us if she could occupy that part of my property, um, as to how she's going to get in. Uh, there is another house in the front. It was there when I purchased my property, but it was not up for sale when I did purchase my property. Like I said, it was a long time ago. So, um, we're prepared to do a driveway past me into the back. We are having a hard time finding a surveyor. If there is anyone that knows one, that could recommend someone that could do it, that's not going to charge us an arm and a leg to have it done, we're open to that. Um, that's the only reason why we don't have the survey already done, because we can't find somebody. Other than that, it would be a true blessing to have my daughter with me on the same property.
For the both of us.
Yes.
In addition to the City of Lancaster.
Absolutely, because she's coming to Lancaster.
Okay.
That'll be a new, you know.
All right.
More of everything.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve item ten, Z twenty-five dash nineteen.
I second it.
All right, there's been a motion in the second to approve item number ten. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say no. Those who abstain, say abstain. All right, it carries. That moves us to, uh, public hearing, item number eleven, city attorney.
Good evening, mayor and council. It's my understanding that approximately six-oh-eight tonight, the, um, city's, uh, planning staff received a, uh, email and letter from the applicant, um, formally withdrawing the S U P application for thirteen-oh-six Mercury, Mercury Lane. Um, and so that's been, uh, properly received. Um, I'll pass a, a copy of it to the city secretary for inclusion in the minutes, and so that item has been, uh, that item has been withdrawn by the applicant.
Now, you that, uh, filled out a, uh, card to, to speak, uh, there's, there's no need to, unless you, unless you want to, because, uh, they, uh, pulled the, uh, the item. Do you still want to speak?
No, I'm, I'm good.
No, you, uh, this, I go, I was going to say, let's amen for, uh, but let's say, did you have your hand up?
I did.
Yeah.
I would, I would like to pose a clarifying question if possible, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, to, do you need to speak to the attorney?
Well, I, I can pose it to you all.
Okay.
You will then have to, in turn, pose it to your attorney.
Okay.
As you will know.
All right.
May I?
So let, okay, let me, uh, let me open, I guess, the public hearing portion, uh, of this item, and, uh, if you care to speak on it, you can come.
Mayor and council, good evening. Marcus Knight, uh, eighteen-twenty-three, Athenae Drive, Lancaster, Texas. Um, so myself and some of our neighbors noticed the, the public hearing, uh, request for this property three weeks ago, and we spoke at, uh, Planning and Zoning, expressing our concerns, and we appreciate Planning and Zoning denying the request. But here's where I would like to get clarity. Uh, the request, the specific request was to have, to accommodate seven children versus what is allowed by right, six. So Planning and Zoning denied the request for seven. What I've just heard from our attorney is that the applicant has removed, uh, their request, but the, the clarifying question would be, are they removing the request to eliminate using the property for a residential in-home treatment facility? Or are they withdrawing, withdrawing the application specifically for the ability to have seven children versus six? That's a very important, uh, determination that I think we would all like to get clarification on.
All right.
And I'll leave it at that. Appreciate you all for serving.
All right.
Good evening, council and mayor. Uh, my name is Kwan Brown with Simply Custom. I am representing Simply Custom as general contractor and community partner for Sky Heights Safe Haven, located at thirteen-oh-six Mercury Lane. Uh, we were retracting the S U P because there was just some unclarity as far as the definition for the group home. Uh, my first point on the state law of Texas Human Resource Code, section forty-two point zero-zero-two, uh, number ten defines a foster group home as a licensed facility caring for seven to ten chi, I mean, seven to twelve children through a child placing agency. Sky Heights is licensed for seven and therefore fully compliant with the statutory definition. Point two on the Lancaster ordinance, Lancaster's Development Code, section four, point zero-two, allows group or community homes in a single-family district for persons with disabilities up to six residents plus two caregivers. The, the, uh, the problem came with the disabilities up to six. These children are, don't have disabilities, therefore we say it's not required for that up to six, uh, for that group home, and so we, uh, do not fall under that disability-based category, and therefore the section does not govern our use. Uh, point three, absent of prohibition, importantly, the code does not pro, prohibit licensed foster group homes in residential zone, since state law clearly authorized them, and state licensing preempts local restrictions, there are more burdensome, a special use permit is not required. And so that was coming the reasoning in which we wanted to retract that.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, council, um, and, uh, to the mayor and the council. My name is Carmely Sims. I'm a resident of Lancaster for over twenty-plus years. I also. Also, I am a school teacher by trade, and my problem is that it seems to be blindsided in that neighborhood. I've been, I've been in that area, like I said, my husband and myself, over 20 years. And even though it's been reclassified, or as they say, I understand the need for helping kids, but my problem is that we don't, the safety of the children, the safety of the community, and the safety of everybody in that, like I said, in the neighborhood. There are other group homes in that area, and people walk all days, all times. And my concern is the supervision, how many people are they going to have? You just can't put people in a home. I'm sure you've read on the news where there have been several cases where they were unsupervised, and the owner did not know what was going on. And I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm leery of other people just coming in, you know, and blindsiding us, and then the property value has dropped, will drop, and you have to just be very, very careful. I've learned, first of all, that, like I said, we didn't receive notice. It raised immediate concerns because the neighborhood is strictly residential, and the zoning committee had already denied it, but he said they pulled it on other, for other reasons. But here's another blind side. I have over 46 years of working with children who have special needs and who have behavior problems. From that experience, I can say with confidence, placing children, you don't know where they're coming from and how they are, are they going to run? Are they going to get out of the house? And you don't have adequate supervision, it's going to be rough. What happens if a child runs away or leaves unsupervised? What if an emergency arises? These are real risks, especially in today's world. It's not just about rules or restrictions, it's about ensuring these children are safe, cared for, and supported in the right environment. We're not opposed to helping children. Anyone who knows, me, knows that I love children deeply, but this, the setup that they have does not provide the level of care the kids deserve. It puts them in a very bad situation. You'll have people going in and out, and the alley is very, very short, and just, it's going to be too much traffic. This was presented suddenly, but as neighbors, we do have a voice. We want our community to remain like it is, a safe place for all children, yours, mine, and our grandchildren. So with respect, I urge you to vote no on whatever the proposal is, and if there's going to be something else, we need to be notified in the community and not just the day before. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. There's no action to take on this or vote.
City attorney is coming.
Oh, somebody, oh, come on now.
Mayor and council, because this has been withdrawn, any comment from myself or any other staff member at this point would be improper, because there's nothing for you to consider. That having been said, I will be happy to visit with the concerned gentleman immediately following the meeting and maybe answer his questions one-on-one.
Okay. All right, well, council, that concludes our business for tonight, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
There's been a motion in the second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Those abstained, say abstained. We're adjourned at 8:20 PM. Enjoy the rest of your evening.